Good evening, everybody. My name is Art Whitman, Chairman of the Shatsbury Select Board. I'd like to call this meeting to order on January 17th, 2022, at 6:33 in the evening. First thing on the agenda, does anybody have any conflict of interest with what's shown on the agenda? No? I think I do want to say that the agenda is going to be changed slightly. We are not going to talk, are we not going to have discussion on the added person to the, not the DRB?
The Planning Commission.
The Planning Commission, okay? At this time. Next thing on the agenda probably is?
The minutes.
Is the minutes? We probably have, we have minutes for at least the last meeting, is that right?
We have minutes for December 20th to start with.
Okay, December 20th.
And you're?
Entertain a motion to accept the minutes of December 20th?
I'm moved.
Second by Ken? Second by Mike? Okay? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, 4-0-0. You want to, you want to sign that for David? How would we handle that?
I just need someone to stop by and sign it. It doesn't have to be a big rush, but someone needs to stop by and sign it.
Ken or Joe or Mike?
Yeah, I've said that maybe tomorrow afternoon.
Tomorrow afternoon would be good, Ken. I'm not going to be in in the morning, I have an appointment.
Okay.
Okay, do we have another one, Dave?
We have a group of Water Board meetings that we can approve as a group that were sent out on Friday. They include...
Even though this isn't a Water Board meeting?
Yeah, it's the same group of people meeting. I believe you guys can approve these. Our Water Board meetings are too far apart, we keep missing them. So we had October 4th, October 15th, November 1st, November 8th, December 6th, and December 20th.
Okay, approve them all at once?
Yes, you can approve them all at once.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve those meetings as led off to us for Water Board.
I'm moved.
Ken? Seconded by Joe? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you.
All right, I want to correct something. Tony will have to sign these, because it has to be the acting chair if you're out of town.
Okay. So, Ken, you understood that? Tony's going to have to sign them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Tony, can you hear us? You're on mute, Tony.
Next on the agenda would be?
It'll be warrants.
Warrants, okay.
So give me one minute, I'll pull up the warrant. I can read down these. I don't know how well you can see them, Mark, but I can read down them if you'd like. So the...
Just a minute, I got, I got something in the middle of the screen I got to get rid of.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead. We have warrant number 23, or I can't see the, let's scroll down.
It's on the third page. It's $45,302.62.
Okay. Entertain a motion?
I'm moved.
I guess I got it by Ken and seconded by Joe.
Sure.
See, describe, yeah, why don't you go ahead and scroll through and read the ones that are $1,000 or more. I guess, it looks like we got salt for $5,500, Blue Cross Blue Shield for $6,800, business, business card services for $1,044.
That was mostly ordering stamped envelopes from the post office.
Okay. And then we got several of them for $1,000, $1,100, $1,400, $1,100, and $1,800, all for GA Bull Fuel. I assume diesel fuel for the fire trucks and everything.
Yeah, yup, yup. One of those was for the first propane we've ordered for the garage.
The first?
Yup.
And the garage has been built for almost two years?
Yup. The thing, the thing is tight.
Very interesting.
Even after it got loosened up.
Yeah.
We got MSK Engineering Design for $1,300.
That was for the ramps for the transfer station.
That's, that's just the design of it?
Yup.
Yup.
What was the AT&amp;T mobility? It was like 6,000 something. What is that about?
I gotta move something.
It's up on the other page before this.
Yeah, hold on, I gotta move the screen a little bit.
I missed that one, I guess.
Yeah, I missed that one too. Where'd you see that, Joe?
It's going to be AT&amp;T, right there. Yup, mobility, 6,000.
No, that's $82.
No, that's, I'm sorry, that's not, that's the BC.
Yeah, that's the Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Yes, Blue Cross Blue Shield. I'm sorry, I misread it.
Okay. Give me a heart attack there.
I thought it was a cell bill, I said, wow, that's a cell bill.
Let's see, we're RCS Consulting, which was just normal computer work. Sullivan and Powers was 1350, that was the last payment for the audit. VRS Sales. VRS Sales, yeah. That was change for the fire truck.
What's United Construction and Forests, Dave?
That's a new business that Mike is using. Let me look up exactly what that was. That was John Deere Service Parts. They're out of Springfield. It's the John Deere deal, I don't know where United Construction and Forests, it's a new title for him. It's the same deal over in Springfield.
I know where that John Deere deal is in Springfield.
Yeah.
Probably sold out to somebody.
Yeah.
And then we got Wayme Daily for 5,561, probably for...
It's like winter sand.
Yup, winter sand. So, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, 4-0-0. I don't hear Tony in there, so I think it's still 4-0-0. So three people got to sign them, is that right, Dave?
Actually, one person under the rules can sign this. That's the way it worked last time.
Yup.
I just want to check here with Tony. Tony, can you hear us? Because Tony signed out and signed back in.
Well, maybe you can grab Tony when he comes in, sign the other one.
Okay.
Okay. What's next on the agenda?
We have one more warrant.
Oh, that's right, probably payroll warrant.
Payroll warrant, 22, for $29,731.01.
Do you hear a motion?
I'm moved.
Second?
Tony, you're on mute.
Seconded by Joe. There's Tony. Any discussion? All those in favor of a payroll warrant, say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? So carried.
Aye.
That's the end of warrants?
Yes, no more warrants.
Okay. What's next on the agenda?
Announcements.
Announcements? Anybody have any announcements? I think what we'll be discussing later on, we're getting announcement later on, but I guess for now, I don't have any. Does anybody else have any? Public comments would be next? Did I see Stephanie Lane?
Stephanie Lane has a section here, she's doing the presentation on Lake Perrin.
With Lake Perrin, okay? Nobody else, Dave?
Nope, there's no one else out here.
What's next on our agenda?
Next is the Treasurer, who will not be here tonight, but I have two of her reports that I can bring up. Let's see, I'll go back to the screen. If I can find her report, oh, here it is. So, I can just run through these numbers with you, I don't really want to comment on her numbers. The cash balance at the end of the month was $880,000. Things that you see coming in here, zoning fees, transfer station, the big one is the highway state aid check and a lot of delinquent taxes coming in at this time of year. There's one odd thing there is our TAM check was lost in the mail for November, so we had to cancel it and issue them a new check. And as we go through the disbursements, you see the replacement check there for that. The other ones are payroll and that. The reserve fund balance, the balance on January 17th was 927, 252, and the reserve fund is 1.3 million, and Lissa's reappraisal is 228.
Okay.
And the reserve funds, nothing much has changed because we just entered these. Sorry, I gotta move you guys out of my screen here. Let me take this off the screen. So as you can see, nothing's really changed much there. We have the equipment fund at 222, the fire department is building back up for the next truck, they'll have $170,000 by the end of the year for that. The water department is large, but that's just collecting the water bills. And of course, the ARPA funding is the big one at the bottom at half a million dollars, with another half million coming.
Well, since the Treasurer's not here, we really can't comment, just have to say we saw it, okay?
Okay. Next would be the final public hearing on the VCDP implementation grant for 2018 Lake Perrin Village, and Stephanie Lane is here from Shire's Housing to discuss that.
Okay. Welcome, Stephanie.
You're on mute, Stephanie.
David, is it possible for me to share my screen?
I think so. I'm not sure I know how to do that, but...
I just have a brief presentation.
Can you get onto the screen now?
It says, "disabled participant screen sharing."
Oh, okay, let me... You should be good now.
Okay, thank you very much. So, my name is Stephanie Lane, I'm the Executive Director and Director of Development for Shire's Housing, and we are located in Bennington at 307 North Street. We're a private not-for-profit development and property management company, and we're here tonight to talk about the Lake Perrin Village project, which we completed, we received their COs in September of 2020, and we're finally closing out the grant. We were a sub-grantee through the town of Shatsbury to receive VCDP funds, Vermont Community Development Program funds, for this project in the amount of $350,000. And there's just a shot of one of the front buildings. So, just to provide some updates, now that it's been a year already, and I can't believe that it's been over a year, so as I said, we completed construction in September. Funding for the project included $350,000 from the Vermont Community Development Programs EDB Fund, which funneled through the town of Shatsbury, and we were the sub-grantee. As we close out the development, this presentation seeks to provide a brief overview of what we were able to accomplish through the project. There are a couple of the buildings, four buildings on site. So the building designs are eight one-bedroom, ten two-bedroom, and four three-bedroom apartments with a range of income restrictions, two handicapped accessible units, one sensory accessible unit, so if someone is blind or hard of hearing, it's set up to accommodate their needs, and then four adaptable units, which are easily transferred into a handicap, fully handicapped accessible unit. And the universal design allows accessibility site-wide, so there are no trip hazards with the sidewalks, the entire site is accessible. We went really above and beyond in terms of energy efficiency measures on this project, and the first iteration of this project was actually propane, and we thought we could do better than that. So this is a fossil fuel free site, we have included no oil, no gas, nothing. We used aero barrier insulation air sealing, which is an aerosolized cough, and it seeks out any breaches in the envelope, and it can air seal better than any human can do mechanically. So it was a combination of, you know, the mechanical process of air sealing by the nylon green crew, but also we took this extra step with the aero barrier, and because we did that, we surpassed passive house standards. And so far, it has saved between $12,000 and $13,000 this year, and that's based on our PERFORMA number, but I think after this whole first year and one more year, we'll really be able to tell what the true savings would be, but versus, you know, the typical propane system. We use prospective shell foundations, so it was reduced use of concrete, it saved the project about $60,000 doing it this way, and it was a single core for each foundation. It's all electric heat, but because the envelopes are so good, it makes sense to do it. It was a process to get to that point and to get a plan to do it that way, but we pivoted pretty quickly and as a team decided that this was a much better end result for the project and for the longevity of it. So it has baseboard heat, air pump hot water heaters, and it's, at the end, we were able to put on PV solar panels to sort of complete the loop and make it really make sense. The units were filled within 45 days of completion, which I think is a record in the state. Any of ours have ever leased up that quickly, it's usually at least 90 days. So this was amazing, we had a really strong waitlist for this, and still have a waitlist for it, in fact, people love this date. And the energy efforts are really paying off. We've partnered with Perrin Recreation to provide residents with passes to the lakes. We've purchased all of the residents' passes to help support Perrin Recreation, and we're going to be holding cooking classes and camps to further promote well-being. We've tried to do a couple of events, we really want to partner strongly with them, but with COVID, you keep, you know, you wind it up to shut it back down. So we'll get there, though. I anticipate this summer a lot more activity, and it's really a wonderful opportunity and amenity for our residents, and they really enjoy it, and I think it's been a good partnership so far. We'd like to work together with Perrin Rec in the future to do some fundraising, to do some grant writing, and kind of further their goals as well as part of this partnership. So we're talking about ways to do that and working with VHCB on the conservation side Just a picture of the interior and the rents range between 665 and 1050, depending on bedroom size, they go between one and three bedrooms, and the income limits as well, of course. Some are restricted in this project at a much higher level than what we typically do. They're at 120% of median income for six of the units, and that was thanks to the having-for-all revenue bond that was available at the time. And so in a family of four, that would be about $74,000, so significantly higher than we can typically go, and I think it makes for healthier development. So, that was, it was brief, but I didn't want to read you a book. Does anyone have questions?
Stephanie, I think that Shatsbury was just a pass-through, and so are you looking for an approval by the Select Board to let money pass through? Is that the process is?
Yes, and then a warrant, I guess, will be issued for the funds.
So, in the future, the next meeting, there will be a warrant signed, is that the way it works, Dave?
We're still working through that. I've been tied up with another project, but yeah, we'll have this wrapped up in a couple of weeks. I think Stephanie and I would both like to wrap this up pretty quickly at this point.
Absolutely.
Do you need a motion at this time, or just to go ahead and make out the warrant?
Yeah, the board approved all this at the very beginning. This is just more procedural stuff at the end. If a vote comes up, we'll do it at the next meeting, but I don't even believe we need one.
I think if we vote on the warrant, that's sufficient enough.
Yup.
Okay. Stephanie, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the support of the project. It's really been amazing, and the residents are really truly very pleased to be in Shatsbury. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Stephanie. Good job.
Thank you.
What do we have next, Dave?
All right, we'll move on to the DPW report, which we're not going to have one tonight, obviously. We all know what the DPW is doing today. Mike's probably pretty worn out and seen that the temperature's plunging tonight, and it's mush in the parking lot out here, I think he's going to be, have an active morning again. The only real thing we had on for tonight was the big bid package for a new single-axle dump truck. It's a pretty standard package that I would like the board just to approve so that we can just send out, so we can start getting the bids in and get on the waitlist for a new truck. This is all programmed into our capital plan, buying this truck this year.
I think for, Ken is always asking what engine is the stainless steel body, and I believe it's a Cummins engine, and there is stainless steel body, which makes it last a lot longer.
Yes, that's how I understand it too.
Okay. So I guess what we'd like to do is entertain a motion to give Mike the approval to send this bid package out to the appropriate people that want to bid on it.
Yes.
I'm moved.
Tony, motion by Tony?
Second?
Seconded by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? So carried, 5-0-0.
Dave?
Yeah.
We're going to get a wing for that truck or not?
Yeah, so a wing will be with it.
Okay.
What do we got next, Dave?
The next is discussion on remote hearings for the PC, DRB, and Select Board. Passed by the legislature on Friday, was a bill, I think it's S172, that would allow basically us to go back to what we were doing last winter and spring. Right now, the way it's set up now, none of you have to be here, someone has to be in the building, and the building has to be open, which is the function I'm performing tonight, and my partner here from CAT TV, we're the only two here, so. But we can take a vote, that we go to all remote meetings, or, and I don't have a problem with this because I would be the one in the building, we can just leave it the way it is, and you can decide to stay home, or as this wave kind of peters out, you can start coming in. I do kind of have concerns about all of you being crowded at this table right now, so if someone wanted to come in, one or two or something, that would be one thing, but this is authorized, it's just come up that we could go back to complete remote. Some people have had concerns about the one person sitting in the building that has to be open to the public, you know, at night or whatever, but I'm not frankly concerned about that. So, it's just an option if the board wants to take it or not, or we can just continue to function like this, and as this improves, we can start showing up again.
Dave, I'm concerned about the DRB and the Planning Board, because that means Shelley has to, would have to come in.
It's my, yeah, it's my understanding that they are already going to move to totally remote. I don't know if they voted on it yet. Martha, would you know that? Have they voted totally remote yet?
We didn't vote totally remote, we decided that Shelley could stay at the office at this moment, and then we'd kind of go time by time, but most of us are remote at this time, and Shelley is in Kohol during our meetings.
Okay.
If she doesn't mind that, I don't have any problem with it staying that way.
Yeah, and I can always set her up again so that she can work remote from home if she would prefer to do it under the new bill from home, and if that's agreeable to the DRB and PC.
So, so no, no motion would mean we would stay the way we are now, where we could go in if we wanted to, and you don't mind coming in, is that my understanding?
Yes.
Is that the right understanding?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I guess, I guess it's up to you, but there again, no motion at all would mean we'd stay about the way we are.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I don't have a problem with doing it this way. I just don't like when you're all pile up at the table, I don't think that's a great thing right now.
Okay. All right. Okay to go on to the next thing, gentlemen and ladies?
All right, the bigger one now is the remote town meeting. The town meeting has been authorized to go totally remote with the public information Zoom meeting like we did last year, basically exactly what we did last town meeting. That's been authorized, it's not required, it's up to the board to decide which one it is, so I can do the warning.
Okay, gentlemen, I guess probably the thing to do is that to have some discussion, we need a motion, and I don't think we, I think we got to have a motion one way or the other, so, and of course, I would prefer a motion in the positive, so I think a motion to have the town meeting in public, as it was, has been in the past, but not last year, would be the motion, we can, we can turn it down, amend it or whatever, but I think to have some discussion, we really should have a motion on the table.
I'm moved.
Second?
We have a motion by Ken, seconded by Tony, that we have town meeting in person. So, I've talked to some people about this, they're, I think the unique thing about Vermont is that we do have this town meeting, and a lot of people think it's very important and hold it very dear to their heart, and a couple people expressed concern that if we canceled it again, it might almost set a precedence. It looks like the COVID thing is kind of waning in places where it started earlier, and so by the 1st of March, it may have passed its peak. I think either the school or the garage would be large enough to make people six feet apart and ask them to wear a mask. That's one way to look at it, the other way is, do we want to be called a super-spreader if this is not over? So, we kind of got to make a decision, because if we decide to go with the complete Australian ballot, they have to go to press very quickly.
Right.
And so, that's my opinion, I guess I would, I would like to see it in-person town meeting, I missed it last year. But, Mike, do you have an opinion?
No, particularly, I think hopefully, like you said, by early March, hopefully it'll be, we'll have passed this peak, and hopefully it would be okay to have a town meeting. I guess at that time, if people feel it's still too dangerous, anyone can just decide not to show up, so, in terms of the public. So I'd be okay with an in-person town meeting at this time.
Ken?
I don't know, I watched every football game there was this weekend, I don't think I saw a few masks in the whole fight.
I know, it's scary.
Only 70,000 people, I don't know if you'd call that a super-spreader or what, but I kind of agree with Mike that everything I'm saying, by March, it doesn't do the matter if you've been vaccinated or not, if you're either going to get it, or everybody in the world's going to get it, and there's not going to be a lot of that, so if it's bad, you just, I'll put a mask on, that's all.
Tony?
I want to make sure that Marlene is ready for requests for absentee ballots, so that if there's a large request for it... if there's a large request for it. And, you know, and make sure that the deadlines are advertised to people so that they can make a decision about whether they want to participate or not. You know, I'm in favor of town meeting. It's great, but my concern is, we're talking six weeks away, so I'm not quite sure where we are with this yet. I'm just, you know, I'm concerned, but, you know.
I agree. As far as Marlene, I did talk to Marlene, asked her if one or the other was more complicated or a lot more work and she said, no, it didn't make much difference because she has to have the polling place open anyways if it's all Australian ballot. So, she didn't think there was much difference as far as her responsibilities, so. But absentee ballots are important, aren't they?
Yeah, so I think people need to understand that they have to request an absentee ballot if they're not going to participate in voting in person. So, you know, to get that information out to them.
Joe, any comments?
I think town meeting would be great, but if we're still masked up at that point, we probably shouldn't. You know, if we feel we have to have masks and we're going to be crowded in that gym, I don't know.
The trouble is, when we make the decision now, we can't come to first of March and say, oh, we're going to have an Australian ballot because the ballots have to be printed one way or the other. So, that's our concern. That's why we're talking about it now.
Right. Well, it's like Mike said, you know, if we're not around the curve, then, you know, people decide not to show, they won't show.
Did I see Martha's?
Yeah, I was just going to make a comment, just being in the field at the moment and vaccinating everybody and boosting them at the moment. But, you know, we're peaking at the moment in Bennington County, but there's a lot of folks in Bennington County that are not boosted at this moment, some of which are Shastberry folks. And so, the danger of Omicron is much higher for folks that even if they have two of the vaccination series and are not using, to just put that into mind. And do you have a date that you're thinking? I know the first of March is Voting Day.
Yes.
Will we do it again on a Sunday like we had the past year or is there an option to do in-person and Zoom? What are my thoughts?
The date has to be February 28th for in-person. If we did it like last year, we would have to work it out with CAT and probably some other towns to get broadcast time. And going to what Joe mentioned about masks, the school has already told me that they will have town meeting, provide a gym available, but it would be totally their discretion to say if masks were worn at it. We would have no say in their building on that. And just a comment for, and what Tony was alluding to, the in-person meeting is what votes on the municipal budget. And if we have very low turnout, you have a few people approving a $2 million budget or turning it down. So, there's a few things to weigh here. And, you know, when it was put, it's only six weeks away. Yeah, that makes it sound a lot closer.
We're talking March 2nd is the town meeting?
March 1st. The 28th is Monday.
Oh.
And it's the first Tuesday of March.
Right, March 1st. Yeah, so it's six weeks.
All very good points. I guess any more discussion or anything? I guess Dave has some good points about people passing a major budget. Don't know.
If the board wants more time to reflect on this, we do need to have a special meeting next Monday. Decision would have to be made because we have to go to the printers. I can work up a warrant to cover either one so I can just get it to Marlene the next morning. Or we can have a special meeting later in the week, just, I don't want to feel like you five are on the spot to make a decision right now if there's things to contemplate here. There is options. We could have a special meeting just to review this again if you wanted to, even later this week. We could just do a Zoom meeting similar to this one.
I was going to say, so what's the drop dead date for us to make this decision? You're saying next week?
I can probably give you to next week.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that, you know, we're like looking at a crystal ball here and, you know, I don't know if my opinion's going to change in a week, but the reality is, is that I hear you about the fact that less people would participate. I mean, you know, Art, I hear you about the importance of town meeting and those people who want to talk, want to talk. Yeah. And, you know, and I'm thinking that an informational meeting would cover that ability to do And I'm, you know, boy, it's really hard to predict. It's only six weeks away. And Martha, I agree with you. I'm concerned. I mean, I'm hearing about too many cases of outbreak, even with people who are boosted and bad and bad COVID. So, you know, anyway, just food for thought. You know, if we could hold it off another week, that's fine. I mean, things may change.
I think, what about tabling the motion?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, I agree. Yeah.
Dave, how does that work? Do we, does somebody make a motion, we table the motion and then we vote on that, on tabling it?
Yes.
Steve?
It's okay.
Okay. Do I have a second to that? Second? Second by Mike? Yeah. Any discussion on tabling?
I thought last year that we changed the, I can't think of the word I want now, for budget for the year, in fact, that went to Australian ballot, not Florida ballot.
That's correct. And if we do a, an informational meeting, the budget will go on the Australian ballot. If we have an in-person town meeting, the budget has to be voted off the floor. That's why I bring that up, that if we have a very small turnout, we'll have a very few number of people deciding on a $2 million budget.
But they have no say because if we go to Australian ballot, the budget is what it is. We change it, which can be done from the floor. So, that's the dilemma we're in.
Yeah, like last year, when it goes on, when you decide to have an informational hearing, the town budget, which is the only budget voted off the floor, would automatically go to Australian ballot and the voters can vote it up or down. If it's voted down, there's a whole process for representing a budget.
Martha had a good idea going, people that could go Zoom perhaps. If there's a way to maybe get a mega screen in the gymnasium, we could get people on it.
As far as I understand, the legislation allows for exactly what was done last year, which was an informational meeting only, and that's by Zoom and CAT TV.
Okay. Okay. So, what we have is a motion to table. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? So, we will table this until at least next Monday. Dave, you and I will talk to see if we need it before that, okay?
Yes, I'll talk to Marlene, make sure that, because we're trying to put the book together, get everything ready for the printer, just to make sure we don't have to move it up a day or two.
Right. As a minimum, we're going to have a meeting next Monday for some warrants, probably a brief Waterboard meeting and of course, this discussion here.
Okay. All right.
What do we got next?
Next thing will be a budget review. So, let me, give me a minute here to...
That's right. The last, the last time you didn't have...
Yeah, it didn't work.
Everything you wanted, so we put it off till this meeting.
Excuse me, why did this come up again? What happened to it? Okay. So, we'll just start off with, this is the proposed expenditures for fiscal '23. This is just the first breakout of it. You can see the DPW takes the largest percentage at 39%. It's a little shy of a million, but the DPW also gets the lion's share of the transfer to reserves also for materials and things. You can see how it breaks out to Public Safety at 6%, General Government. This is just to give the broadest overview for everyone. Debt Services is very small. Community Appropriations is up to 4% and the other ones are quite small. Cemetery at 2% and Solid Waste at 8%. Sorry, I'm going to have to go through this. Oops.
Percentages are great. They're really, they're very good as far as allocation of funds and, yeah, I'm pleased with it, very pleased.
Thank you. I think, oh, here it is. Sorry, I'm having a little, fortunately, we haven't had to do a lot of these, so I don't have all my skills up to date. So, this is how the Shastberry DPW expenditures break out. The construction and maintenance at 25% of their budget. And you can see there, the transfer to DPW in reserve accounts, that is 261,000 of the reserve accounts go right to the DPW. And that covers the money we put away for trucks, the $100,000 for Class 3 road funds, a culvert reserve, paving reserve, this year a sidewalk reserve because we are starting the planning grant for the sidewalks over on Grandview. We just engaged the company for that. And then wages, benefits and administration total 40% for this year.
Did you get any thing for cost of asphalt going up from Peckham?
Say that again, Ken. Sorry, couldn't hear that.
Did you get anything of advice for increase in paving costs?
We haven't gotten that yet.
Because I see fuel is up over $3.50 a gallon now on bonds.
Yeah.
Asphalt too.
Yeah, it all depends on which direction the wind blows with that. It's hard to predict. Yeah, we haven't got it yet. It's a little early for them to do next year's pricing, but we should have it pretty soon. This is just, I've always liked this one, just to show the top line, the O-line is the inflation based on the 2015 budget and where it would be. And our actual budget is the red line that runs below. We came pretty close in '21 to actually meeting the inflation rate and we've dropped back below again. This year, unfortunately, because inflation is so high, we're drifting further away from it, which is good and bad. We're keeping up.
I think we got something in there for fuel and stuff like that because that's just going to better the world.
Well, as I've said, I've always had, fuel is kind of a constant thing. It protects us. I don't like stacking it up too much on what might happen because we've kept well within balance over the last eight years with what we have. And it was pretty high, what was that, about eight, nine years ago? So, I still think we're in a pretty good place with that overall.
Well, I mean, I'm not trying to be a stick in the mud, Dave, but it's just, with the way things are going, if you're a little bit high, it's better to be high than low.
Yeah, I think we'll come in pretty well. When we get into the numbers in that area, I think you'll see what I mean.
Okay, I'll take your word.
But this is the, this is actually the bottom line. We'll start here. For fiscal '23, we're looking at $2,395,518. That's a $133,378 increase from last year. Our non-tax revenues will also go up next year for $33,000. So, we're looking to raise 1.9 million in taxes, which will bring a tax rate of 0.48, which will raise the taxes per 100,000 of $22.80. If you look here, where I'm looking, the actual increase is not much more than it was, oh, here it is, in fiscal '23, the tax rate went up $23 per 100,000. Last year, as you remember, we cut a lot of things. Our feeling was, and the general feeling amongst a lot of people was, we were going to have a very, very tough year this year and that didn't pan out, but we cut back on a lot of things, which we're trying to make up now. But the overall rate is still only going up 22.80 for this year, which, like I said, compared to '21 is actually less than what we raised in '21. Now, I'm just going to scroll all the way to the top and we can just go through. Anything you have questions on here? General Government is a pretty modest increase, which has to do with a number of things here. There are some things, yep, this took me way to the bottom. Hold on, sorry about that.
Dave, nothing's showing up on my screen.
No, can no one see this?
No.
Oh, no.
Oh, I wish someone had said something.
You're doing a good job.
It's easy if I don't show you the numbers, that's it.
It's showing up on Facebook.
Here we go. You can see that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We're all set now.
All right, sorry about that. I'm going to take you back up to the top here. Okay, so, we can just go down the line here. People have questions over any part of this. FICA is up a lot. Insurance and bonds is only up marginally from last year. We're trimming down professional services. These big increase here was one-time thing. As you remember, the server was replaced, so we had a lot of extra cost to install and get the new server up and running. And that's one time, so that's not really indicative of anything in the future there. And all the other ones stay pretty much close. The office equipment is another one that is clearly way out of whack, budgeted for $2,500 and we're up to $11,000. That again, also was the server. That was funded by using the GW Hawkins Fund. We transferred $10,500 over. So, even though this looks extraordinarily over, it was covered out of the GW Hawkins Fund for the new server. And the server was purchased because it was frankly just old and was becoming a large security risk. Coal Hall, really, there's not much change here. It goes up about $21 and things have worked out well there. We haven't had any issue in the last few years. Vital statistics, because of changes with the Assistant Clerk, you see, her position is going up a bit. Part of the intent here is that the Assistant Town Clerk will also be the Assistant Assessors, or not the Assistant, will be the Assessors Clerk after voters approve eliminating the listers. So, we get into kind of a combined area here, which will have two functions and have a little bit more time also in the Clerk's Office. The health insurance, actually, health insurance has gone down this year, which I was kind of skeptical about until I got the first bill and it actually did. And the rest of these numbers pretty much stay the same for the Clerk's Office. Finance, auditing, delinquent tax collection are also just marginally increasing. Actually, auditing is going down because the town report didn't cost as much as we thought it would. Treasury Services is, uh, pretty much the same also. It's gone up about $400. Listers, the big change in listers will be in wages because you see that go from 13,000 to 16,796. That also is because, uh, if the vote is approved, the elimination of the lister's office, we will go from having three listers to having one, uh, assessors clerk who will work directly with our contractual professional assessor, which is NIMRIC. Professional Services, uh, we think we're on a good path here with NIMRIC still remaining around 16.6. I don't think we need to increase that at all. Animal Control is a little asky-were here, as you can see, because we no longer pay the large stipend that used to go to Ravenhalls or Kennel because she has left now that it goes to the ACO wages here. And we pay, uh, our ACO a quarterly stipend of $306, uh, to maintain a small impound, which we've already used. Emergency Management is the same. Chief Joe was in here. We went through his budget, uh, which, uh, has gone up all of $10. If I'm going too fast, let me know if there's any questions, just let me know. Fire Warden's the same. Law Enforcement, I didn't increase law enforcement this year. Uh, I think we are having a pretty good relationship with the Sheriff's Office now. They were a great help on a number of things, so I see that as improving. Uh, Emergency Medical is our budget for Bennington Rescue, which, uh, was just sitting at 22.5. Um, we entered into this agreement with them a couple of years ago. Uh, honestly, they forget to bill me every year. I have to call them and ask for a bill. Highway Administration, uh, again, the, the one interesting thing here is, is highway wages overtime. It's, I've dropped it 10,000. And the reason I've dropped it 10,000 is because we've not, we're not... When I first got here, we had a lot of storms and it'd get up and I kept raising this up, but when I did a real long-term average, uh, it's, as you would imagine, each year is a little bit different. Some years, 28 will not do it. A lot of years, 28 will be too much. It just seems to be the middle ground here and, uh, my personal tendency is I don't like to budget for worst case, like to budget for the average, which is a hard thing to say today because there's, I'm certain, there was a lot of overtime today and it's a holiday, which, uh, makes it much worse. But these are the things you can't control, but I don't like pumping up another 10,000 here if it's just gonna lay unused.
I'd like to make a comment on that. Talking to Mike, uh, they also realized that there's no sense in, um, calling all night long. They've got some good trucks with wings on them. They can go out at, they can get through at 10 o'clock and go out at 3:00 in the morning and do a really good job real fast. So they've kinda conceded that they don't go, um, you know, 24 hours like they used to at times.
Yeah, I think it's a much better...
With them winds and them prep, you save a couple trips on each roof. So you're saving time.
Yeah, I think Mike does a great job of, of managing the overtime and, uh, making sure it's used efficiently. And we've had so much that, to finish some projects in the summer, we've actually authorized overtime during the summer just to get some things done. So I do think that is enough money in there. Uh, the big difference in health insurance, because it is a big difference in health insurance for the Highway Department, is that we've gone down a family member, uh, family plan and that, that is just a huge difference in the amount of insurance we pay. All the rest of these are pretty straightforward. Highway Construction and Maintenance, these numbers also pretty much stay the same. We've got tree removal though, up again, another 5,000. We really need to take down a lot of trees. You know, signs stay the same because we always have sign problems. Signs disappear all the time. Uh, gravel has worked out fine at 90,000, as has chloride, winter salt, winter sand. Those always worked out and of course, again, that's one of those categories where you get the really bad winter, you're gonna be over. But these, for the average winter, those numbers have held pretty well. Highway Maintenance, I'm upping each assigned, each vehicle is assigned the same amount for accounting purposes, but we finally, after raising these a few years and getting on a much better, uh, maintenance program, this year, our cost to date is much more in line with, uh, how much we've budgeted. We were considerably over a few years. You can even see in '21, it was 146,000. Uh, we were 38,000 over budget and we're getting much better as we've increased the amount we're spending on each vehicle and the maintenance has gotten better, more planned and outsourced. Garage pretty much stays the same. The garage is a miracle on heating fuel. It, it's really, I've even called Mike a couple of times and said, you know, I haven't bought any propane for that building and it just, just works great. Solid Waste, of course, our big differences here in, in the wages. Uh, this is because now we run it completely and Greg, who is an employee of TAM, is now an employee of the Town of Shasbury, so that's why that goes up so much. Uh, I've also added the column down here for Casella Services, who is our contractor for 99,846. That's, uh, set off by getting rid of the management contract of 74,539 over here. Um, and this is still something in the works. We're only into our first six months of this. It seems to be working out well. Revenue seems to be there and I must say, the amount we're billed is pretty much what I anticipated. So we're hoping, you know, that these estimates will, will come out right for us. And revenue has been good, even though we've had quite a challenge. Always had quite a challenge with not really being able to sell stickers because we don't wanna having that much contact with people, uh, cause that was always a cash in hand business. We have the deposit box up there now and revenues have stayed right up, uh, cause people are just putting in the dollars, weighing and paying in what they need. So, uh, altogether, it's coming out pretty well. Streetlights were always just the same, streetlights. Parks and Rec doesn't have much of a budget because we rolled that into DPW a few years back. All the money that gets spent in parks is really coming out of reserve funds. These are just minimal things to maintain some of the buildings. Cemetery, we have, uh, a new superintendent. Uh, the assistant is, is, uh, this is Marlene here. Marlene does a lot of work for the Cemetery Committee. Uh, the contract services are, uh, we approved a couple of meetings ago, uh, and that's the maintenance of the cemeteries and that 31-2 is constant for the next three seasons. Uh, then we get into planning and development, which are always pretty much just the same. County Taxes, um, I've been pretty good at guessing on how much they've gone up every year, so I've just done the same thing. Transfers to reserves, this is where we cut a lot in '22 in anticipation of a really rough financial year, which didn't really occur. I put the 10,000 back in Coal Hall. The equipment, because this is a long-term capital purchasing, uh, equipment, 120,000. The next fire truck is another 90,000 going in there. Uh, obviously, the garage reserve fund is gone. Paving reserve, uh, dropped to 25, well, it's up from last year, but it's only going to 25,000 instead of 45,000 because we have enough to do the Buck Hill job we're, we're planning to do next summer. 6,400, I've added to the sidewalk reserve and that is because we are having a scoping study done. That is our share of a $38,000 scoping study for sidewalks along, uh, Grandview that the Board approved a few months ago. I've left Cemetery and the Park Reserve at zero because both of those organizations have quite a lot of money in the bank. And, um, just so we slowly get back into where we were, I didn't want to add them totally back in. Uh, Cemetery, like I said, both of them have a lot of money to spend in reserve funds. Culvert Reserve and the Auto Reserve, I just bumped up 1,000. The Veterans Memorial, the same thing. There's nearly $50,000 in the Veterans Memorial Fund, uh, so I didn't see any point in adding to that this year. Of course, class three stays the same. We use that constantly. The reappraisal reserve has been gone for quite some time and the air pack reserve Debt Service, the new one we added this year was the mower state loan at 24,000 and the CAT excavator at 11,000 per year. Still, uh, we don't carry a lot of debt. The garage bond payment, of course, which goes down every year. Community Appropriations are all in. We just discussed this at the last meeting. They did go up $7,000 from, uh, the year before and that brings us to our total budget of $2,395,518. This is where we started here. Might've been a little quick, but any questions?
That, uh, that total, total budget does include the community, uh, community appropriations.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes, it does. Yep.
Dave, I had a question on a few pages off. It was on the hazardous waste and the gas, oil, fuel. It showed zeros going across the board. I was, I mean, unless I missed something, but...
Oh, solid waste? Yeah.
Yeah, solid waste and gas, diesel and oil, zero, zero, zeros. We...
Yeah.
We do buy that, right?
No, not for there. Uh, we don't have anything that runs at solid waste.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And hazardous waste day is now a function of the, uh, the solid waste implementation plan. Uh, it's run on a county-wide basis. We pay for that up there.
Okay.
Yeah, we used to do that here and, um, it, it doesn't make any sense anymore. The whole county went into this and part of the countywide group that, uh, it was all managed there.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Uh, why don't we take a motion to, uh, use the, use this budget as what we present to the, uh, to the citizens and then if there's, then we'll have discussion if anybody has any questions. A move by Ken. Uh, second by Tony. We have a motion, this is the budget we're gonna present to the citizens of Shasbury for the 2023 fiscal year. Is that right, the right thing to say?
Yeah, fiscal 23.
Fiscal 23. So is there any discussion or concerns or anything? Seeing done, I guess I put it into a vote. All those in favor of sending this budget, say aye?
Aye.
All, anybody opposed? So carried, 5-0-0.
Okay.
Great, great job, Dave.
Thank you.
As always. I know you put a lot of time and thought into this, so thank you again.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, the next item is the town meeting vote, we're just repeating this at every, uh, meeting, that there will be a item on the Australian ballot, ooh, Australian ballot for the elimination of the list, elected lister. And I'll simply ask, shall the voters authorize the elimination of the office of town lister in accordance with VSA 17 and replace it with a professionally qualified assessor who shall have the same powers, discharge the same duties, proceed in the discharge thereof in the same manner and be subject to the same liabilities as are prescribed for listers or the Board of Listers under provisions of Title 32. What we wanna do is, is, um, we've had trouble even maintaining three listers. Uh, the assessment of property has become a very complicated thing and most, not most, but many towns are moving to a professional assessor. Since I've been here, we've always had a paid professional assessor anyway. Uh, I just wanna more formalize it because they're the ones who are really doing the, the critical work in assessing the properties. They're the ones who defend the assessments. Uh, it'll professionalize the office and we will create our own, as I described, um, an assessor's assistant and she will be the face of what would have been the lister's office to the public here. A local resident who will be able to answer questions and questions she can't answer, she will contact a professional assessor. Uh, as I said, right now, we're in the contract with NIMRIC to provide this service. Uh, I, I personally like NIMRIC because it's a company. We've had individuals before, some who have left, some who, uh, have just changed jobs and it really leaves us in the lurch. NIMRIC has a number of assessors, so we would never be left completely high and dry. Uh, right now, um, we're working with our main assessor who's Nate, plus a few staff members to keep all the, uh, records up to date and, uh, I can see a, a large improvement coming, uh, if the voters go this way, uh, with a real, you know, just a more coordinated and professional, uh, work in the lister's office.
Yeah, I, I've got a couple of comments in that. By adding somebody in the office every day, nobody has to make an appointment. I mean, if the COVID thing keeps up, we have to make an appointment, but, um, in the future, there's always gonna be somebody there to answer a question about listing, whereas, uh, with the people only coming in, what, certain days of the week for a few hours, um, somebody has to come in and they, they were referred back to, they have to come back at a certain time to the lister when they're in here. So I think it's a, it's a big benefit for people that, um, come in to ask a question. And I know that if there ever is a grievance, um, there is, because it's a professional assessor, uh, when it's laid out, there's just absolutely no question that, um, that's what it is, because that's their job.
Yep. Okay. Uh, and the next item would be, again, we're just going over the board expirations. Uh, the Development Review Board, uh, there are two expirations this year, Lon McClintock and Michael Day, and they need another member anyway. Uh, the Planning Commission, Mike Foley, is up this year and we do have, um, a recommendation, or we don't have a recommendation from the Planning Commission, but we've had a name given to us for that. Uh, in the Select Board for elected officials, uh, Art and Ken are up for reelection this year. Uh, Mike Kazlin, it was a, for auditor, is up for reelection and Barry Mayer's trustee of public funds is up for reelection. And...
Uh, the, uh, uh, the DRB and the, and the Planning Board are not elected, they're just appointed.
They're just appointed, yes.
Right, okay. But, and then there are some that are elected.
Right.
Okay. Does some have to get a hold of these people on the appointments or, or let the committees take care of it themselves?
I'm sorry, I broke up there a little bit, Art.
Uh, is it our responsibility to get a hold of the people that are up on the appointments to see if they're gonna run again or let the committees do it themselves?
Usually, the committees do it themselves. They know who's up and they'll, they'll just submit in time.
Okay, very good then.
That brings us to other business, which I have none.
Anybody else have any other business? Well, thank you very much, everybody, for, for the time you put in and everything, so, being no other business, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
A move.
Second by Ken, second by Tony. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.